Testing one, two, three. This will be the December 4th, 2013 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a City Council Regular Meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, December 4th, 2013, approximately 7:00 P.M. Will you please join Vice Mayor Breimer for the pledge in a moment of silence?
Please rise for a moment of silence, please. And if you'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Citizens' Comments. The floor is open for Citizens' Comments, for non-Agenda Items. Here are none closed Citizens' Comments. Bring it back to the Council, City Council Comments. Who would like to start? No comments?
No comment.
I've got a few things, if you'll bear with me. I attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference over in Orlando on the 21st and the 22nd. And basically, the Florida League of Cities puts together committees that look at what the priorities of the League of Cities are going to be for the next legislative session. And Frank sits on one, I sit on one, Courtney sits on one, and there's actually five committees, Energy and Environment and Natural Resources. And basically, what they do is, they work through all of the issues that are going on in the state and pick their two most important ones, and those become the priorities of that particular committee. So I can, just so that the Council knows, I'd like to give you an idea of what's going on. On the Energy, Environmental, and Natural Resources Council, basically, there are two issues: septic tanks, water quality, and quantity. There's also a committee called Finance, Taxation, and Personnel, and their two priorities are the communication service tax and the local business protection. Florida municipal pension reform was their other priority. Another committee is Growth Management and Economic Development. Their two priorities are economic development in the state and housing and small-city CDGB policies. The next committee is Transportation, Intergovernmental Relations, and their priorities were transportation, funding, and ethics. And the last one was Urban Administration, and their two priorities are sober homes and vacation rules in the state. This copy of the legislative information is available. There's a copy of this at City Hall if anyone wants to see it. So that was the 21st and the 22nd. On the 25th, Courtney and I met with Congressman Bill Posey, and we spent about a half an hour with him, just kind of introducing ourselves again and going over some different things that, you know, we're interested in. And it was a pretty good meeting. Bill's very receptive to, you know, the needs of our community, along with the rest of Brevard County. He was actually a councilman in Rockledge when he started, and was a House Rep in Florida, went on to the Florida Senate, and now is in Washington in Congress. So Bill's got long ties to Brevard County. On the 26th, I attended the, one of the CRA public workshops on the A-1A corridor, and Monday night, I was at the Board of Adjustment meeting. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also attended the Florida League of Cities, and I sit on the Environmental Board. Two main topics, again, water and septic tanks are what they are working on this year. In the water is a few different issues. Springs are one of the major issues with them. Lake Okeechobee, the drainage which goes to the Kaluushahatchee, excuse me, and the St. Lucie River, and also the Indian River Lagoon system is one of their priorities this year. I also attended an EDC meeting today from 4:30 till about 6:30. I was at the CRA A-1A meetings that they had, and they're very interesting. I'll tell you a quick thing is that a resident of our town for quite some number of years gave me a packet of information that, when they started doing some regulations in around 1980, they did a survey in the city. And it was interesting, because the three or four meetings that we've had already, what people wanted for A-1A back then is almost duplicate of what people are saying today. I mean, it was, "Slow it down, make it safe for people to cross," and they were the two number-one issues in this packet of information, which I thought was interesting, being thirty-some years apart. And it really hasn't changed that much. And that's all I have to say. Any other comments from Council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, City Attorney's Report?
I have nothing.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We actually had our last A-1A Concept Plan Meeting last night at the Civic Center. It had about fifteen attendants for that focus group. We've noticed that most of the focus groups, the ideas are starting to be the same. So, they're not the same, but very similar themes are running through all the meetings. So I think when we get the plan together and we have the meetings after that to, you know, start nitpicking at them, I think you'll see a lot of commonality between a lot of the residents. We do have a lot of events going on in our city. We have the Ocean Reef Beach Festival this weekend, December 7th, so please try to come out to that. We have the Fire Department's Open House on the next day at 5:30. I will be there with my daughter, because they're gonna have bouncy houses. So if you have children, they have bouncy houses. We also are getting sand right now, so if any of the beachfront residents are noticing that, they're in Harbor, Indian Harbor Beach right now, they're gonna be moving down our way. So if you are wondering what that schedule is, just please give us a call, and we'll be glad to do that, be glad to provide that to you. In your packet, you'll see two thank-you notes to our Police Department and our Fire Department. I just got another one today regarding the Police Department. I think it's, you know, we get these a lot. I like to put them in here every now and then, so you can see, and the public can see what they do for our citizens. And then I wanted to update you on the School Board Workshop. They had a workshop on their school closure policy. I actually attended that, and then I sent a letter to the School Board from me. The letter actually went to the real chair, which is Karen Henderson now, so the one that, the letter in here is mistaken. The actual letter that went out was correct. But basically, their original policy language for their school closure policy, interestingly enough, we had always thought that they did not have a school closure policy, but they actually did. And that came out at that workshop. But they were changing the policy to include, they basically said, "Schools may be considered for closure under the following circumstances: If student enrollment at the school is projected to be below 500 students." Now, that's pretty much every beachside school here, and there's some schools on the beachside that their design capacity are less than 500. So, and that Seapark is one of them. So our concern was, basically, these schools will always think that they have a target on their back, and, you know, is that really fair? Should you be targeting this school, the way the school was built, or should you be targeting the conditions of the area that's now rendering the school, you know, less used? So basically, we were asking them to look at things like the utilization of the school and not the actual number of students. When I went to the workshop, I believe there are three board members who feel the same way about that by the end of the workshop. So I did want to say that our School Board Member, Amy Nisi, has been a huge supporter of trying to keep Seapark open. I think she understands both our concern from school concurrency perspective, as well as the neighborhood concern of keeping neighborhood schools open and how important that is to our community. So I think it was a good workshop. The next step will be a Community Outlay Committee meeting, which I'm on, and that will be on Friday. So we'll be meeting and going through the new draft policy that came out of the Board's direction. So I'll update you on that as we go. I did want to let you know that the Beautification Board is holding their Holiday Lighting Contest, with nominations being due to City Hall by December 20th. So if you do have any nominations, you can call them in to City Hall. You don't have to come in to let us know, you can just pick up the phone. And then also, STANA will be riding through the city again this year, and the Twilight STANA schedule is in your packet, so you know when you're gonna be receiving that goodwill. I did want to, I did, I have some action items that I need to add, but the first one is, we did receive a complaint that has been filed by Klaus and Bridget Gersh against the city seeking a declaratory judgment regarding Resolution Number 920. They are also seeking quiet title of property that is subject to the right-of-way vacation of Resolution 920. Our insurance company has accepted this claim, so I'm just asking for your direction to be able to work with the insurance company to resolve the issue and move on.
Thank you. Concerning this, an action item, consensus or motion?
I think I just need to...
Consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Before I turn it over, open it up for public hearings, since it is an action item. Any public comment on this agenda item? Here are none, back to Council. Council?
Consensus?
Consensus? Okay.
The other item is that I'm in contact with the Economic Development Commission on becoming SNAP certified, so I would like to schedule a workshop with Council to discuss that, among other issues, regarding growth in our city and how we're handling that. And I'm proposing Wednesday, January 8th, if that works out for you all.
That's not of me, I don't have anything going.
An alternative would be January 22nd?
Well, not the other day, it's myself. The 22nd would be better?
Probably.
22nd?
22nd. Yeah, either one. 22nd gonna work for me.
And the other item is that, according to my contract, if I want to take leave for longer than five days, I need your approval. So I would like to get your permission to take off from December 19th through December 27th, if I can.
Consensus?
Of course, I'll be available by phone, and I'll be here soon.
Thank you.
Okay? That's it?
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing. I'm sorry, Mayor. Councilwoman Deanan emailed me tonight and said that she could not attend tonight, obviously. And she does have some comments she would like to be written or read into the record regarding two agenda items, so when we get to those, please let me do that.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment, a follow-up comment that I would like to make. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our Police Department and our Fire Department for those lovely letters that each department received. That was really fabulous. But I also want to recognize our other departments. They're not nearly as visible in the work that they do as Police and Fire are, but they work just as hard, and they provide excellent services to all of us, and they're a part of the team that makes this city run. So I give my thanks and appreciation to all of our staff.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Citizens' Recognition. Chief?
Again, you can have my back, everybody, so I appreciate, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to take a couple of minutes to recognize the longevity and accomplishments of volunteers. Mayor, Council, all of us, thank you very much for the opportunity. We talk about the volunteers often, and this particular night, I just want to kind of summarize the year-end recap of their accomplishments overall, and then recognize just a few for longevity. This year alone, the efforts of the Satellite Beach Police Volunteers have donated 3,346 hours in the fiscal year. That would have equated to the annual standard Florida rate for volunteers that's established for the state. That would equal $62,369 that they saved for the city. And I can, and I feel comfortable saying "saved for the city" because the things that they do need to get done. If they weren't doing it, then someone would have to do it, a police officer, or a staff person, or administrative person. We've talked about that many, many times. And I've said it countless times, and I'll repeat it one more time, you can't appreciate what they do unless you're the one there that is seeing things get done. Well, cops are working, administrative people are doing their job, and everybody's doing their job, and the extra things are all still getting done, and that makes it much more efficient, and it's just outstanding. The first one we have is for Katie. This is for five years, and there's your five-year longevity pin, and my heartfelt thank you for everything you've done. I really appreciate your time, and I hope to see you for another many years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's pretty cool, that's from Mayor.
That's very nice. Thank you.
That's great. I'm happy to grant that, I'm glad about that. Let's see, Joe. Joe, one up.
Joe, 15 years of service. January 1, 1999 is when you started. 15 years, it's been a long time. And I remember driving around as patrol sergeant back then, going, "Wow, look at these guys, always out helping us out and bringing stuff and dropping things off, and now here you still are." And I can't thank you very enough. Thank you very much.
It's been our pleasure. Thank you very much. And John? John Keller? There he is. Now, see, John doesn't have a pin, because he's already wearing his pin that says 15. Now he's getting his 20-year designation for his pin. 20 years. He's one of the very original people, back in the Bob Bolin days, when the program very first got started. And it's pretty impressive to get, look, I mean, this is a career. There's people that have jobs, there's people that have jobs that get paid that don't work 20 years in one place. And to do it for nothing is pretty impressive. I mean, I want to say thank you. And I waited for Gina at last, because Gina's getting her five-year pin. She started in June of 2008. But the reason I waited for Gina to be last is because Gina is our Volunteer of the Year. She has done an absolutely outstanding job. And, you know, you say a lot of the same things, and I hope it doesn't sound like it's being diminished, because, you know, I say some of these things about other people, but not that I can use all of the comments from all the other people and wrap them all up in the one. Because not only was she there to help us whenever we needed, not only was she there to do whatever task was needed. Not only was she the person that you could pick up the phone and call and go, "Okay, we really have something we need done," and she says, "No problem, when you need me," and we say, "10 minutes ago," and she says, "Okay, let me get in the car and I'll get in there." But I'm happy all that. Then with City Hall, and when the City Manager came in, the City Manager was trying to get things organized, and she said, "Boy, I sure could use some help getting this filing together, because the guy who performed me left a frill of mess to the office." I don't know why that was. So who was the first person, as you can imagine, who stood up and said, "I think I'll have him over there, and I'll help him with whatever I need." So not only just the Police Department, but anywhere in the city. And, you know, we'd be here for 20 minutes if I went through everything that she does and all the different things, but I just want to say, thank you very much. It did not go unnoticed. Your contributions were outstanding for that year, as they have been for the five years you've been here, and we hope to continue seeing you for many more years. Thank you very much. And your, your mayor?
Gina?
Do you have a quick question?
Joe? Come on.
I still wasn't listening. Johnny's here. I apologize.
It's just they...
All right, he can. Thank you very much. The last thing I want to say before everybody sits down is, this program has no run itself, so while they're here, I want to say thank you very much to Lynn Harlow and to Holly and to all of you. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Number Eight. Before I move on, I will open this as the advertised public hearing for Agenda Item Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1081. An ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, creating a new Division III, Article III, Chapter 30, Satellite Beach City Code, establishing process and notice required for vacating, abandoning, and discontinuing public streets, alleys, canals, easements, and other non-fee interest, providing severability, providing effective dates. The second reading, ordinance number 1081.
Thank you. Discussion?
Motion to adopt a...
Not so fast.
Yes.
There's a, yeah. If you'll look on page three.
Okay.
Under review, paragraph A, about, let's see, on the fourth line, it starts, "Each department and each utility." Well, because the utility information was provided in that provision at the very top of that page, we can delete the words "and each utility" in 334A. Help him see where I am.
Yeah, I see where you're at. Yep.
And in addition, the next line talks about objection within 15 business days. We need to insert the words "after days," we need to insert "after the completeness reviewed." That's when the clock starts ticking.
After the...
Completeness review.
Completeness?
And then, just to call your attention, page five, Section 335A1. About midway down, the sentence starts, "The notice shall be mailed by..." This is, well, this was added this time. It was supposed to have been in the version last week, and it was omitted, and it's so, just for your attention, the words "by certified mail, return receipt requested" are a new addition to the second reading.
Any other corrections? Thank you. Okay. Discussion from Council?
Motion to Dr. Ordinance Number 1081 on second reading with the changes as suggested by...
As amended.
As amended by Councilwoman God.
A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, a second by Councilman Montanaro. Courtney, you have a...
Yes, this is the comments from Councilwoman Deanan that she wanted read into the record. She says, "Ultimately, a vacation of a right-of-way alley, canal, etc., runs with the land, not a property owner, and should be based on the application and application requirements pertaining to the specific property in question. Requiring that adjoining property owners join and sign the application is unwarranted. Whereas, a consent letter or objection letter may be added to the application package when presented for approval or denial, adjoining property owners are not specific petitioners and should not be required to join or sign an application for a vacation request." And she's specifically referencing Section 30-333B. She goes on to say, "As well as regulating, quote, 'visual access,' unquote, to waterfront for all citizens, may pose this ordinance to be challengeable on face value." She's referencing Section 30-334D3A. And then she goes on to say, "As a note, there are no municipalities in Brevard County, parentheses, including the county itself, that require an ordinance in lieu of a resolution when vacating right-of-ways, alleys, canals, and non-interests."
Thank you. At this time, I will open up for public comment, Agenda Item Number Eight. Three minutes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Cliff, refer to your business address, 1795 West NASA Boulevard. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Gray Robinson, and we represent property owners, Klaus and Bridget Gersh. With regard to the ordinance as a whole, my clients believe that the ordinance really is, in the way that it operates, is really a prohibition against vacations, specifically vacations that are similar in kind to the one that was granted to my client by way of Resolution 920. The ordinance, some of the specifics that my clients object to in the ordinance is, in the second whereas clause, the city determines that waterfront or near-beach access, right-of-ways and easements should not be vacated unless there's extraordinary circumstances that are established. There's no definition or clarification of any kind of standards that advise the public as to what those extraordinary circumstances are. With regard to Section 30-333B, that section requires the applicant in a vacation process to obtain and to include consents from property owners who abut the right-of-way and agree to the vacation, and then to disclose the names of those property owners abutting that do not agree with the vacation application. My clients believe that that's too heavy a burden to place on an applicant, to require them to obtain those consents and to include all consents in the application. The section states that the application must join those parties that are in agreement, and that is simply too heavy a burden on an applicant. In addition to that, what happens if an applicant attempts to obtain those consents, and that property owners do consent, but they simply don't and refuse to join the application? What happens in that circumstance? The ordinance is not clear on that point. Ordinance is not clear also if owners state that they don't have, or they do have, an objection, but refuse to either sign or be identified. So that's something that my clients take issue with in the ordinance. With regard to, and this is where the primary thrust of my client's objection is, is with regard to those vacations under 30-334D, which are those located east of A-1A, and include those that would be included, include my client's vacation that was granted by Resolution 920. With regard to subsection 1 under D, it states that if the public street, alley, easement, or other non-fee interest of the city provides access to the beach, that no application should be granted unless there's a comparable land offered up by the applicant. Well, the ordinance doesn't define in any way what access to the beach means. There's no way to determine whether an platted, undeveloped right-of-way provides access to a beach or not, it's absolutely not clear. With regard to 2 under that section, it provides that the application needs to be consistent with Policy 1.1, 1.1.7 of the Coastal Management Conservation Element of the City's Comp Plan. That section requires or says that the city may purchase land for access or for oceanfront public open space. The ordinance doesn't clarify how an application for vacation would be consistent or not consistent with that policy. That policy doesn't even seem to really have anything to do with vacations of public right-of-way. With regard to 3 under that subsection, it states that the applicant, an application may be granted if the applicant can establish that the property sought to be vacated, does not violate any of the city's, the following city objections. One has to do with visual access to waterfront. Two has to do with conservation and dune protection. Three has to do with reservation of future infrastructure, stormwater, public access or utility usage. Those factors really don't come into play or have anything to do with a vacation, and there's no objective identifiable criteria in the ordinance whatsoever to determine whether an application meets those criteria or does not meet those criteria.
Sir, we had, there's a three-minute on it, I'll give you some more if it's...
It's one quick final point.
Yes, thank you.
Under Section 30-335, subsection 2, the reference, and I don't know if this has been changed in your draft, but the reference to the statutory section that you're intending to reference, in my copy, states 177.701. I don't know if that's been changed, but I think what you intend to say is 101, and my clients don't believe that that section applies at all, but even if it does, I think you probably should look at maybe clarifying that reference. And with that, we would respectfully request that you not pass this ordinance at this time.
Thank you. Floor is still open for public comment. Here are none, back to Council. Jim, on six, page five, section... Jim, on sex, page five, section 2 under 30-335, is that correct, 701, or is it 101? Just to make sure where...
I think it's 101.
It's 101.
Okay, thank you. Make that correction. Further council comments?
I'll amend my motion for that page. I'll second, I'll amend it. I'll second it as amended.
Can I hear you?
I'll second it as amended.
I have a correction from Councilman Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council? Here are none. Nori, poll the council.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries for nothing. Moving on to Agenda number nine. Jim?
Resolution number 942, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, rescinding Resolution number 920, vacating and abandoning a portion of that right-of-way depicted as Beach Drive on the O'Gally-by-the-Ce plat, generally located between Sunrise Avenue and Magnolia Avenue, providing findings regarding the nullity and invalidity of Resolution number 920 concerning the improper adoption of such resolution and correction of the public record, providing for recording, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. It's the reading of Resolution number 942. I'd also like to bring out an issue that was raised previously because of the reference to Magnolia in the resolution. That's predicated on the roads as identified on the plat. That's where those road references came from.
Thank you. Council comments?
In the first whereas, we need, in the third line, starting with line between the lots, it says "they own." "They own" needs to be stricken, and these words need to be substituted. Owned by Klaus and Bridget Gersh.
Keep going. Keep going. That's it.
They own, needs to be owned by Klaus and Bridget Gersh. Move to adopt Resolution 942 as amended.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Councilman Montanaro. Courtney?
I just wanted to read in Councilwoman Deanan's comments on this item. She says, "After review of the complaint filed in Circuit Court by Klaus and Bridget Gersh, I do not feel that it would be prudent to rescind Resolution 920 at this time. This issue is in the court's hands, and the determination if the vacation was previously done properly should be vetted through the court process." And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any further council comments before I open up for public? At this time, floor is open for public comment on this agenda item. Three minutes. Thank you.
I have a feeling I'm about to go 0 for 4 in this room, but Cliff Reproger, again, 1795 West Nasca Boulevard, attorney for Klaus and Bridget Gersh. I came before you on November 6, 2013, and requested that the city not move forward with the then-recommended action of deeming Resolution 920 null and void in the direction of staff to draft a resolution rescinding Resolution 920. The council did not heed my warning that if you took those actions, my clients would file suit against the city challenging your determination. And as you're aware, and your city manager advised you tonight, my clients have filed suit and are fully prepared to litigate the matter to a final resolution. What I think is important for you to understand is that, at this time, the suit that was filed only contains two counts, as you've been advised. One is for declaratory judgment to determine whether Resolution 920 is valid, and two, to quiet title of the property in my client's favor. You may not care about that, given the fact that your insurance company has picked up the claim, but nevertheless, as I indicated to you last time, the court, not this council, is going to make the ultimate determination as to whether Resolution 920 was validly adopted and is valid. So whether you believe that Resolution 920 is valid or not, the court's going to make that determination. Now, proposed Resolution 942 is predicated on the fact that Resolution 920 is invalid. And I submit to you that the council is guessing as to that fact based on Mr. Langley's prior opinion. The lawsuit at this time is manageable for both parties, because it only really turns on whether Resolution 920 is valid or not. If the city prevails in that suit, then the issue is likely to be a dead one, and the city can take whatever curative action you deem appropriate at that time. However, given that the city doesn't know for certain whether Resolution 920 is valid or not, I would respectfully suggest to you that you delay the adoption of draft Resolution 942 until after that determination is reached. In my opinion, that will save the parties a great deal of time and resources in litigating the matters further. Because if you do adopt and draft Resolution 942, my clients are going to amend the suit filed to include account for inverse condemnation, taking of my client's property, and for slander of title. It's unnecessary to subject the city to those additional claims at this time. Now, addressing the specifics of Resolution 942, my clients do not believe that the city has the authority at this time to adopt the resolution. Regardless of the validity as to the notice, the city has expressed in the third whereas clause of Resolution 920 that the city no longer needs the vacated right-of-way. There's no public purpose served in taking back or rescinding the vacation previously granted, nor as one stated in the proposed Resolution 942. My clients object to the fourth whereas clause in the proposed Resolution 942 regarding my client's or their legal representatives' knowledge of the objections or threats of litigations by other parties, including public comments, prior to the adoption of 920. The city has no ideas to the knowledge of my clients or their legal representatives, nor is that in any way relevant to the validity of Resolution 920. The public comments speak for themselves. My clients object to the fifth whereas clause in the proposed Resolution 942, to the extent that it states that section 177.101 Florida statutes applied to the vacation, or that my clients had any obligation to meet any notice requirements as stated. Nor did the city ask for such at the time of the adoption of Resolution 920. My clients object to the seventh whereas clause in that it fails to identify which third parties would be entitled to some broad due process notice, and fails to address the fact that those parties may have and likely did appear to speak at the meeting held on August 15, 2012, prior to the adoption of Resolution 920. My clients object to the eighth whereas clause in that the cases cited therein do not apply to the adoption of Resolution 920, because there was no applicable notice requirement to this particular vacation request, statutory or otherwise. My clients object...
Sir, you're over to three. I gave you some more, so if you could...
If I could have just one moment to finish up.
Yep, thank you.
My clients object to the 12th whereas clause in that the city does not have the authority to take my client's property without public purpose justification and without payment of fair and just compensation. And for all those reasons, my clients respectfully urge the city council not to adopt proposed Resolution 942, which at this time itself is invalid and beyond the scope of the city's powers, and wait until there's a judicial determination on Resolution 920 before taking additional action. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Public comment portion is still open.
I think you need to think long and hard on this one. Liability insurance, I believe we have $1 million. If that's not enough, what do we do then? This is a very serious situation here, and I think that you need to think long and hard on this issue.
Thank you. Further public comment on this agenda item? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Council?
I would just say that I appreciate Attorney Reproger's comments that were so civilly presented this evening. I don't agree with his premise. I believe that we are acting on a sure legal footing, and I'm prepared to support this resolution.
Any further comment? Yes, sir. Lenore?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes. Motion passes for nothing. Moving on to Agenda item number 10. Jim?
Resolution number 943, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, rescinding Resolution number 921, which allowed vacating and abandoning a portion of the east end of the canal right-of-way depicted along the northern boundary of the replat of Michigan Beach, 5th edition, as described herein, providing findings regarding the nullity and invalidity of Resolution number 921 concerning the improper adoption of such resolution and correction of the public record, providing for recording, providing for conflict, and providing an effective date. It's the reading of Resolution number 943.
Thank you. Council comments?
Move to adopt Resolution 943.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? Do you have any, is she writing comments on this one? Okay. At this time, open up Agenda, excuse me, Agenda item number 10 for public comment.
I believe this is Dale Abrams' resident, the REM property.
I think so.
When are you coming to take my property? This is what you're doing. You're going after everyone's property that's on the water. And I can't believe what you're doing to the REM, the REMs. They've been dealing with this issue for over five years.
Would you like to address that?
I've already contacted the REMs, and unfortunately, somebody else contacted them before we could, but I asked them to go ahead and submit the application, and they've done so, and that's on the agenda for the 18th.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further public comment? Here are none. Back to council. I have a motion. Any further discussion?
The citizen's comment definitely needs to be rebutted. We are not taking people's properties. We are trying to...
Excuse me. You had your choice up here. Thank you.
We are trying to correct mistakes that have been made, and that does not prevent people from applying again, this time doing it with the proper procedure.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes. Motion carries for nothing. Moving on to Agenda item number 11. Jim?
Ordinance number 1082, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, imposing a moratorium on the enforcement of the city's sign code on certain types of temporary signs, providing findings, providing for severability, providing an effective date. First reading of ordinance number 1082.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance 1082 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further comment from council? Open this Agenda item number 11 for public comments. Here are none. Back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to close the advertised public hearing and move on to Agenda item 12.
Thank you, Mayor. The December 18th meeting, you'll have the second reading for the signed moratorium ordinance. You'll also be revisiting the retirement board drop fee ordinance that you passed a while back. We need to make that retroactive from the date we started the drop fees, so that the funds can be returned to the persons that were charged. So you'll see that back in front of you. We will have a solution for the playground equipment. From a financial standpoint, because of the savings we incurred with going with the ADP idea, we don't need the $50,000 that we had programmed in the capital improvement program for finance software, so we will be reprogramming that to do the playground equipment. So we'll have that idea. We'll have some types of equipment to show you, and we'll be asking for your direction to move forward with that. You'll see two applications for the easement vacations that we will be completing, as well as an application for the right-of-way at Cinnamon, which is, AKA, the REM property. And then also, we'll be asking you to look at a resolution regarding a uniformed chart of accounts issue, which is a Senate bill 1292. This is an issue that has some profound impacts on the staff's workload, and that resolution will include an estimate of that, and basically, we'll be protesting the unfunded mandate that that will occur. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. As I've stated, if you have any other agenda items that you would like on it, please contact Courtney, and with Christmas coming and so forth, give them a point of time as possible. Moving on to Agenda item 13. We do some appointments, so elect a vice mayor, and we have to do liaisons for the boards.
I'll make a motion to nominate Lorraine Gott as a vice mayor for the 2013-14.
I will second that. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Vice Mayor Breimer, to appoint Lorraine Gott as the vice mayor. Any further comment from council? No, sir. I'll open it up for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Excuse me. Please, it's hard enough to hear up here. Are we talking in the back? If it would please remain quiet. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Any comment from council?
No.
Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes. Congratulations, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Moving on, liaisons to the boards. Courtney, you want to help us through this one here? Some ideas that you had?
Well, I know that for the Space Coast League of Cities, that's you and I. That's going to remain the same, right? I would recommend you keep your South Beaches Coalition member the same. There's a long-term transportation planning part of that, that you kind of need a cohesive person on. That would be my recommendation, and I don't know if you want to...
I didn't do it.
I was recommending to leave you on the South Beaches Coalition, just because it's long-term transportation planning, and I think, you know...
Is that... Yeah, no, I think it's great. Yeah, no, great. We'll just get consensus on these, and then vote out a total package at the end.
Yes. And there's two boards that I don't really understand why. You have a council representative at the board meetings, because I just don't see the point, honestly, and you're busy. We have a lot of A1A meetings coming up that you're going to have to attend. There's the General Employee Police and Fire Retirement Boards. I don't know if you all see the need to be there. And then the Samson Island Park Committee, I'm not sure if you see the need to be there either. So I don't know if you all want to just...
Wish, as the council.
I'm just trying to control your workload, because I know you're going to be coming, you're going to be busy coming up with the CRA stuff with A1A.
Well, the purpose of these liaisons is to always have a member of council be aware of what's going on in each of the boards, so I think that, you know, the appointment should continue.
Okay.
I don't have, I know you were on the pension. I don't have a problem stepping in on that one if no one else is interested in it.
Because that's going to give you...
I do sit on the municipal pension trust fund for the League of Cities, so it's not my obligation.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And I did have that one, and I'd like to take planning and zoning instead of that one.
Okay.
That was actually going to be one of my recommendations.
Okay. You want to read your recommendations? Let Courtney read them and see where they fall.
I was just trying to mix you guys up, because, so, I was thinking maybe Lorraine could be on the planning and zoning advisory board. A lot of times, we do the ordinances to you, which, a lot of times, you help us structure those. And I was thinking maybe the mayor could be on the CRA advisory board, because a lot of the events are of the A1A and things like that, and you've been pretty consistent in attending those. And I was thinking maybe the code enforcement board would be good for Dominic. I know you've already been, sorry, Councilman Montanaro. I know you're on the Board of Adjustment right now, and you're going to be going to our A1A meetings, too, a lot, and that board is pretty sporadic, so I was thinking that might control some of your time. And then I was thinking for Mark, I mean, Councilman Breimer, that the Board of Adjustment the same way. You know, it's kind of a sporadic board, and that you'd have time, more time to go to the A1A meetings. That's what I'm just trying to kind of...
Excuse me. I'm going to ask you, please, one more time. Okay? Thank you.
I know Councilwoman Deanan's been on...
Excuse me. I'm going to ask you, please, one more time. Okay? Thank you.
I know Councilwoman Deenan's been on a lot of the planning boards, so I was thinking maybe she would want to mix it up and go to the non-planning type of boards. So there's about four of those. I'm not sure if... There's the Beautification, Library, Recreation, Sampson Island. If you want to keep those within the... I would consider those non-planning.
Councilwoman Breimer has how many boards?
I'm on Sampson's.
Would you want to go to the REC?
Who's doing comprehensive planning?
I didn't have anybody on.
That was mine, and I'd like to keep it.
Okay.
Would you want to do REC?
I can, yeah, whatever. That's...
Mark on REC, excuse me, council. Vice Mayor Breimer on REC. Okay. The Development Library, Councilwoman Deenan, and Beautification?
There's also, well, yeah, and then this...
Excuse me. I told you I'm going to ask you to leave. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, but I think that Councilwoman Deenan should be able to speak for that.
Excuse me. She should be here. She's not here tonight. I'm sorry. I understand that. Thank you.
And you can throw me out.
Thank you.
Because she should be allowed to speak. You shouldn't be making decisions for her.
Excuse me, I apologize to the audience. Continue. So, if Councilwoman Deenan does not wish to be on these boards, I have to report that she can, you know, excuse herself from it. She's not here. I don't know what board she'd like on. We put them in...
I was just trying to... I just kind of looked at the ones that everybody was on and tried to put you on other ones that were different.
I think it's good for us to move...
That's the only thing I was trying to do.
Move boards, so that we learn other things in the city. And I had talked to Courtney before to try to do that as much as we possibly could. Space Coast League of Cities, we can't, so some of those stay the same, so...
And then I was also trying to... The members that tend to go to my... The late evening meetings with the A1A and the workshops, I was trying to give you boards that were sporadic in the way they meet, and that's Code Enforcement and BOA. And so I was just trying to kind of help you with your time.
I'll take the Beautification Board. That's a Friday morning.
Well, excuse me, just a second. How many boards are you... Before the Beautification, how many boards are you on?
I have Code Enforcement and a Pension Trust.
Okay. I'm going to say Councilwoman Deenan needs to be part of this. Let's put her on the Beautification and Library. If she does not, and she wants to switch around, we can do so at a later meeting. And the Sampson Island Park Committee, who did we decide?
That was... That's open.
Would you like to give her that also? Or I may not order it with somebody else?
I don't...
Why don't we give her the option of those? The ones that are open are Library, Sampson's Island, Beautification...
And that's it.
And that's it. So let's give her the option of those, and then we can figure out which one she doesn't want to sit in, and we'll see if we can throw it in.
And I'm sure I'll hear about it before...
That's fine.
If she wants something else, and I'll...
Fine, fine. We'll work on that. So Beautification, I have Councilwoman Deenan. Board of Adjustments, with the Councilwoman Breimer.
Yes.
Code Enforcement, Councilwoman Montanaro. Community redevelopment, Mayor Cato. Comprehensive planning, Vice Mayor Gott. The Library Board, Councilwoman Deenan. Planning and zoning advisory, Councilwoman... Excuse me, remember this. Vice Mayor Gott, I'm sorry. Recreation Board, Councilwoman Breimer. Sampson Island, at this time, Councilwoman Deenan, and let her pick and see, choose. Space Coast League of Cities, voting delegate, will be me and the alternate, Courtney. And South Beach Coalition, Vice Mayor Gott. Is that...
We forgot the...
I'm sorry. General Employee and Police, Firefights Retirement Board, Councilwoman Montanaro. Is that correct? Everybody okay with that for the time being?
Yeah.
And if Councilwoman Deenan wants to change, be on another board, we'll take it up, you know, when we show her.
We'll revisit it, sure.
We can revisit it next agenda and see if...
Okay. Any further corrections to come on that? At this time, because it is an agenda item, I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Lenore?
Actually, you didn't make a...
Do I have a motion to accept? Do we need to do that?
No, we've never done that before. Except the assignments.
Okay. And I think that covers... Oh, we have some boards, reappointments here. We have the Recreation Board. Mark, do you want to...
I'm getting to it.
Okay.
We have three for the Recreation Board. We have one for Sampson's Island. I'd like to start with that one. His attendance has been excellent, and so I would move to reappoint Frederick Rudge as a regular member of the Sampson's Island Park Committee.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Mayor, second. Gott, and a second by... It'll take you a second.
By ex-vice.
Ex-vice Mayor Breimer. Councilman Breimer. Any other comment?
No.
Okay. Lenore?
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Cato?
Yes. Okay. Do I have another motion on the other boards, please?
I would like to, before a motion is made, I'd like to make an observation. We're looking at appointing, reappointing Jennifer Perduto as a regular member, and...
Margaret Landis?
Out of six meetings, she attended four of the last six meetings. Then on, we're trying to do a swap here, making Margaret Landis go from a regular member to an alternate, and Nancy Wilburg to go from an alternate to a regular. But when we look at the attendance for Ms. Landis and Ms. Wilburg, they both missed four out of the last six meetings.
I believe Ms. Landis is... There's a health issue in the family. I'm just saying, she's been on the board for quite some time on that Recreation Board, and I think prior to that, as I remember, she's always been a fairly good attendee there. Very good. I mean, she's been on that committee for years, and... She's been a stable part of that committee.
And since Nancy Wilburg was an alternate, maybe she was not aware of the need for her to attend as an alternate?
Actually, she had some issues too with family stuff going on. But, I mean, if we're concerned about her attendance, Jim Strayer, who's also an alternate... No, he's a regular member. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll make a motion then, to reappoint Jennifer Perduto as a regular member of the REC Board, to change Margaret Landis from a regular member to an alternate member of the REC Board, and to change Nancy Wilburg from an alternate member to a regular member of the REC Board.
I'll second that with the dates that apply for both of those, all three of those people.
I got a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, and a second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion on council? Hearing none.
And then, Paul, the public?
Open up for public... Thank you. Open up for public comment. Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Cato?
Yes. Okay, I think that covers all of them. Current board, again, if we... Anybody knows anyone that'd like to participate on different boards, we have some openings here. Beautification, we need two alternate members. Code Enforcement, two regular positions. The Comprehensive Plan, one alternate. Planning and Zoning, an alternate. Sampson Island, two alternate members. And I think one thing, too, with each of these boards, we need to make sure they realize it's important to attend, and, you know, even as an alternate, it's important for the alternates to attend the meetings, even though they are not regular. So if we can relay that to the members of each board, it might help. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, adoption of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 20, 2013 council meeting.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott, to approve the minutes of November 20, 2013 regular meeting. Lenore?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cato?
Yes. Motion passes. Any further business coming for the board? Hearing none. One thing is, remember, the Ocean Fest is this week, and it should be a pretty nice day, it looks like, and maybe a great event. So, hearing no further business, meeting's adjourned.
I don't think we have to do that to the appointments.
We used to, and maybe we don't have to.